Hi, everyone. My name is Denise. Thank you all for coming tonight. We're going to get started now. My name is Denise Mena. I am the communications specialist and I'll be one of your moderators tonight.
Hi, everyone. My name is Aria Overly and I am a community organizer with Action and I'll also be moderating tonight.
Hi, everybody. I'm one of the moderators for this forum and I'm excited to be here with you. My name is Sharif Al Fass and I'm the president of Northern Nevada Muslim Community. I'm also an engineer by profession. NMC is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization located in Sparks in Ward 1. And we were established in 1982 and is currently the only Islamic organization in northern Nevada serving almost 2,500 Muslims. Looking forward to it.
Once again, thank you all for coming. Do you want to let everyone know, Action is a 501(c)(3) nonpartisan organization? We do not endorse any political party or candidate. We reached out to every candidate to participate in this event and gave equal opportunity to participate in this forum to all candidates. I want to give you all some information about our new normal framework. Over the course of 2020, Action has worked with our leaders and our southern partner in Nevada, their Southern Nevada Partner Faith Organizing Alliance, to put together a new normal framework that calls on us to reimagine our community's priorities and to center racial justice in our organizing work. This is our new normal framework. COVID-19 has revealed the brokenness and injustice of our systems and society. Communities of colors have been disproportionately impacted both in loss of life and livelihood. In the midst of an ongoing housing crisis, thousands of Nevadans are living in fear of eviction and permanent job loss. Teachers and students are faced with unimaginable cuts to an already inadequate education budget. Our Black community members continue to face decreased access to vital services and an overpolicing of their communities. Elected leaders in our state are trying to act to the old normal with Band-Aid solutions that ignore the roots of the injustices laid before us. We are tired of waiting. It's time to reimagine the status quo. This is why we've created the new normal framework, because it's time to boldly and proactively build the beloved community as the new normal. We need to prioritize where our funding and resources go in order to build this new normal together. I also have a statement from Action that I would like to read to you all. "We want to let our community and tonight's participants know that part of building this new normal is recognizing what is deeply concerning and morally indefensible about the new normal. The intensifying racist rhetoric that we have seen in our elections is a symptom of a system that dehumanizes and undervalues Black, Indigenous, and people of color. We have seen this rhetoric at both the local and national level. These attacks hurt our communities and undermine our democracy. We want our communities to know that Action stands with them during these difficult times. We cannot allow this rhetoric to become normalized in the city of Sparks and we want to make it clear that this kind of racism will not be tolerated in tonight's conversation." I also want to give you some information about some of the candidate and voter engagement work that Action is doing. Throughout 2020, Action has been focused on civic engagement work through the census, voter registration, voter engagement, and candidate engagement. Through these efforts, we have registered over 3,000 voters largely in our Latinx community. We have sent 40,789 texts to help Washoe County residents complete the census, register to vote, and to be able to vote in this unique election. And we have called thousands of inactive voters to help ensure that they would receive their ballots. Our primary voter guide, our primary election voter guide, received 3,503 views. We engaged with 35 candidates throughout Washoe County in the primary and 23 in the general election. Our general election voter guide is available on our website. And we're going to drop it in the chat right now, but for those of you on Facebook, it is at action.org/voterguide. "We hope to build a more inclusive democracy in which we bring the voices of the people most excluded from our democracy to the forefront of conversations about how we build our community. We want to deeply invite our elected officials and those who seek that honor to be part of this inclusive democracy. Tonight is part of that work. We want to thank you for joining us during what is certainly a stressful and busy election cycle during a strange and new time that is challenging of all of us. We are excited to be able to discuss the important issues of racial and economic justice with you tonight. Thank you again for coming. I'm going to pass it now to Sharif."
Thank you, Denise. So now, we're actually going to give each candidate, we'll have two minutes to introduce themselves. Please enable your chat so that you can see when your time is up and you'll also get a three, you will have a warning when 30 seconds are remaining. We'll be switching between alphabetical and the reverse alphabetical order for the rest of the night. With that in mind, we're going to start with the order of council member Abbott.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Action, for... Oh, sorry. There's something popped up. I thought I was muted. My apologies. I'm Don Adet. I'm the current Sparks City Councilman for Ward 1. And just a little bit about me, I was born and raised here in Sparks. I graduated from Sparks High School, class of 2008. I'm also the alumni president for Sparks High School. As much of a role, you know, we're going to go to this a little bit later about school, you know, we don't have a direct role as a city council member in, you know, voting for budget for schools, but I have a deep passion for Sparks High School and anybody can support it. I'm all about it. A little bit more before I got elected, I did HVAC, heating and air conditioning. I went to college at TMCC. I have an associate in HVAC. And so that was my job for 11 years. Then I got into photography and I decided to go into office and, you know, here I am. I love the community. I'm a board member of the Sparks Museum. I love local history. I love volunteering. I actually love giving back and, you know, just helping out. And so, a tad bit more, seniors are one of my very normal passions that I'm very passionate about. And my father had me. He was a little bit later in life. He was around 62 when I was born. Since I grew up with a senior, my mother's now 23 years younger than him, so he's now, or she's now a senior. And just that, this is my calling. I love seniors and it's one of the reasons why I created Sparks Senior Stewardship Committee to give our seniors a voice in Sparks. And thank you guys for having us and I'm looking forward to having a great conversation tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Abbott. Now we're going to go to Councilmember Anderson.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to be a part of the panel here and talking to you guys. And before I even get started, I'm sure most everyone here has seen the things that have been going on in the media that I had put out a mailer last week. I approved it and I just want to start out by saying I am sorry to you, the community. Quinton and I have talked and I'm thankful for he and his family accepting my apology. But I just want to make sure that it's clear to all of you that in no way, shape, or form did I intend for it to come across as racist or portray any racism in the mailer. And then I want to just make sure everyone understands that in no way did I alter or approve an alteration of the photo. So I want to start out by saying that and just apologizing to all of you because Action is an incredible organization. You guys are doing incredible work. And likewise, you need leaders that are doing well. And I had a lapse of judgment and I regret it horribly. And with that being said, we'll move on.
30 seconds.
I am Paul Anderson. I'm hoping that you retain me as your Sparks City Councilman for Ward 3. And what I would like to do is continue the things that we've been doing with innovative decisions and directions and making a positive change in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. Now, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Action. I am glad to be here tonight, hanging out with you guys and all the folks virtually. Let's talk a little about what I'm about. It's a new day in Sparks. I believe that we need a community that reflects a little bit of everybody and everybody will be part of it. As inflation has hit our housing market, we need someone that's going to fight for affordable housing for everyone. When we look at jobs coming to the community, we need somebody that's going to go out and recruit businesses that come here and pay their folks a living wage. When we talk about education, someone said, "Who would spend money to bring a Nevada system higher education institution here?" It's not about the finances at all. It's about access. If you ask somebody that live out in Wingfield Springs and said, "Ask them, well, how long will it take me to get to the University of Nevada, TMCC, or how do I find a place to park or any of that?" They'd tell you they would love to have a branch of the Nevada system higher education in the city of Sparks. I think it's time just for a new direction. We've got people moving here from all over and everybody's welcome. And we want you here. We want everybody here. We want smart growth and we want to talk about the issues. And that's why I'm running for Sparks City Council. Thank you, guys. I look forward to the forum tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And now we're going to go to Ms. Stolarov.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. My name is Wendy Stoliaroff and I am the Democrat running for Sparks City Council here in Ward 1. I was born in West Texas and I moved here right after I graduated from college in 2009 with a BA in English and economics. I've lived in northern Nevada for more than a decade and I love it here. I'm a stepmom to a seventh grader, a proud cat mom to two beautiful cats, and I own Bighorn Communications, which specializes in media and public relations for labor organizations in northern Nevada. I previously worked as the Director of Government Affairs for Filament, a Reno-based technology company, for NARAL as a field organizer, and in the Nevada Legislature as a citizen activist, where I worked alongside the ACLU, PLAN, NARAL, and other community organizations. That's where I fell in love with policy and learned how we could shape it to improve the lives of regular Nevadas. I'm running for Sparks City Council, Ward 1, because I am passionate about good policy that puts people first. We must prioritize affordable housing, working families, and equality in the city of Sparks. Housing is my number one reason for running. Rent has gone up 50% in the last five years and wages just haven't kept up. We need creative policy solutions like inclusionary zoning to bring down the cost of housing and help solve this problem before an eviction tsunami turns it into a crisis. I'm also a strong supporter of working families and a proponent of union apprenticeship programs in the trades. I'd like to see more workforce training or CTE programs in our high schools. And lastly, this one is big. I want to help make Sparks a more inclusive, welcoming place. I am personally an LGBT person. Sparks has the second lowest LGBTQ equality index in the state of Nevada, second only to Mesquite. We also have large Hispanic and AAPI communities who need to be better supported by city services. Sparks should absolutely be a place that everyone can feel safe and comfortable calling home. Everyone is welcome here, not just some, not just those who were born here. And that's why I'm running for Sparks City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stolarov. We're actually going to move now to the questions section and we're going to, each candidate will have three minutes to answer the question. You will also be reminded at the 30-second mark. So I would like to introduce, I mean, Kelly Gallimore will ask the first question.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kelly Gallimore. I am the Chair of Actions Board and a Deputy Attorney General with the Nevada Attorney General's Office. My question is, "The resurgence of Black Lives Matters has shined a spotlight on the failure of police departments throughout the country to truly ensure public safety. What would you do to address policing concerns impacting the Black and immigrant communities and reimagine public safety in our community?"
Thank you, Kelly. Now, we're going to go to Ms. Stolarov. Yeah, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Kelly. Well, I've always said that our funding reflects our priorities and here in the city of Sparks, 42% of our general fund budget goes to our police department. Only 24% goes to our fire department. And Washoe County, of course, funds social services. That doesn't necessarily come straight out of Sparks's pocketbook and it's not something our charter covers. But over the past few years, we've dealt with a number of mental health crises where Sparks Police have been the responders and the consequences have been predictably tragic. Any public safety that our community provides must first do no harm. I think anybody who's been watching over the past few months can see that there is currently a rift in trust between our police officers here in Sparks and the public. We recently had a police officer named George Borbusch who fantasized publicly on Twitter about shooting BLM protesters in the face and running them over with a truck. This is fundamentally inappropriate for a profession that's meant to serve and protect. Additionally, very few of our police officers are fluent in Spanish, even though many of our residents here in Ward 1 especially only speak Spanish. I'd like to implement an independent review board for officer-involved shootings and qualified immunity and ensure that we have a dedicated 24-hour mental health emergency services response team here in the city of Sparks. I think that's something we can work regionally with Washoe County to implement. I actually strongly agree with Jenny Brekis's proposal that was released earlier today in a This Is Reno article where she suggested working with Washoe County to implement a general services tax to fund more of these social services. I think that's very important. And I also think that we should end any city agreements with ICE and work to ensure that we keep families together here in the city. The very first priority we have in this city must be restoring that faith between our police department and our community. It is impossible to function safely without that faith restored. And I believe that police reform is necessary to do that. Cities have a right to implement citizen oversight boards of their police departments and I think that would be an excellent first step, but not a last step.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, you have three minutes.
All right. Thank you. So when I look at this as a person of color, I think about the reflection of who's doing the policing. I personally believe that we need to hire more police officers of color and not at the intro level, but at levels that will command leadership. When we look at transparency, just like anybody, everybody wants a community and agency to be transparent and forthcoming. And I believe in transparency. I think what we have seen nationally is that we have seen police departments fail when it comes down to being transparent. If it means releasing videos on a timely matter, if it means protecting citizens, because sometimes all citizens aren't protected the same. And that's the truth. I also look at policing. I look at on the side of when we hear folks hiring social workers and hiring psychologists. So revolutionize in this field, right? Even though we may hire them, we still have to find diverse people from diverse backgrounds because if not, we're going to have the same issues that we have in many communities today. So the next question is about Black Lives. Do Black Lives matter? Of course they do. They matter a lot. And I think when things have happened to me this week, morning folks have come out and they've said, you know, "We support you." And I'm thankful for that. But it's not just the life itself, but it's also Black voices and people of color voices. And so we need more people to have their voice heard. As Wendy brought up about policing of, you know, folks that are Latino, we have a small percentage, almost nonexistent percentage, of native Spanish speakers on the police force when many parts of our city is Latino and growing Latino. So to be trustworthy and to be transparent, we need police. We need agencies that look and reflect the city of Sparks. So that's my stance and that's my view on it. And I will push for that. I will push for that as much as I can if elected to Sparks City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Now, Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. I want to start off with saying that all in all, the men and women that we have called upon to protect us are doing a fantastic job here in Sparks. They step between us and some really bad situations in those times of need. With that being said, can we reimagine the department? Can we make positive changes? Yes, we definitely can. And what's exciting is that we've already begun making a lot of those changes here recently following the Gwynne Report and starting to implement those different shortfalls that we had in the response. And likewise, we've been in the process of and continue to make changes within the department. Some of the exciting things we've been doing is that we in city council have already approved advisory committee to oversee diversity, both on the hiring side, which one of the big things, and this was already brought up, is that although we meet all the requirements by law, we still are not connecting with and reaching all of our community and all of the people that we would like to see represented on the force. We also are getting ready to, we're bringing on a new police chief. Ours just retired. And with the new one coming in, we're going to be making some changes, implementing a police advisory committee that will help to point that direction to more of community policing than what we've seen in the past. One of my biggest concerns is actually on the mental health side. This is a big topic and we could talk for hours on this one. But I do believe that we need more mental health clinicians in the field helping with this. The MOST team, the Mobile Outreach Safety Team for Washoe County is an awesome model to work off of. And what we need to do is whether we're doing it in-house in the city of Sparks or we're working in coordination with Washoe and Reno, we need to beef that up. I don't believe that we need to replace officers with social workers necessarily, but having them working side by side. And that's something that I feel strongly we need to be focusing on here in the near future.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. Now, Councilmember Abbott.
Yeah. So I think for first starts, I think having these open conversations like we're having tonight, you know, but having them, even when we're not up for election, that's super important for, not just this question, but all the questions. And so to address the current question on Black Lives Matter and trying to spotlight on the police department, the failures of some of the police departments throughout the country. I look at, you know, my plan kind of boils down to a two-pronged approach. You know, we do need to improve the relations between our police department and just citizens in Sparks. There's no doubt there. You know, we've had barbecues, we've done, you know, basically we've gained people out to see them, but we can do better. We know that. And like I said, we've done a good job, but we know there's room for improvement, no doubt at all there. And, you know, we have police chief Carl, who's recently retired. You know, he started having those conversations, you know, early on this year really, about having a police board of some kind. We haven't had that conversation of what type of board, you know, we're going to look at, but the conversation is being had. Long overdue. I understand that one. And like Councilman Anderson said, we have the diversity board that we're, we gave direction, approval direction to start that whole process and looking at it. And, you know, these are steps where we can get more diversity in not just our police department, but our fire, at City Hall, at Tomworth, at Public Works, you know, the entire city operation. You know, definitely it would benefit everyone and it would allow us to have, you know, people that, you know, voices of some that haven't been heard or maybe not as loud or even don't even know there's an opportunity to come work at the police department. How do you do that? Or, you know, how great Public Works is, or either even City Hall, you know, maybe you have a financial background. You don't know you have a job right here at the city of Sparks. And I think getting that message out there is super important for our diversity board. And then the other part, the second kind of prong is social services. I understand Washoe County does a lot of our social services, you know, with the social workers. But like Councilman Anderson mentioned too, we have the MOST team. The MOST is an awesome, awesome team. It's the Mobile Outreach Safety Team. And they're the ones that are, you know, they're out there, they're social workers that are right along with our officers that are, they're not doing case management for long term. It's more immediate, right? There's something going on, either maybe, let's just say there's a domestic violence and they're able to help the lady or the man, whoever's on the receiving end, get help, get services, get in a safe bed that night. And I think those are people that it would be, or I think it's important for us to get more. We need to get more out there. And that, us hiring them on as city of Sparks employees. You know, we need to find solutions to get more of those bodies into our field or into the field to help our police officers and help our citizens in Sparks and, end of the day, help us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Abbott. Now we're going to move to the second question and Mr. Sajid Sularia.
Thank you, Sharif. Sorry, I was muted. My name is Sajid Sularia. I am a civil engineer by trade. Also, I am the Vice President of Northern Nevada Muslim Community located in Sparks. My question is, "In addition to policing, how would you address racial injustice in education, housing, and social services?" Thank you.
Thank you, Sajid. Now, we're going to go to Councilmember Abbott.
Thank you. And so as, you know, as Sparks City Councilmember, like I said earlier, we don't have direct influence on the education system in Washoe County. But, you know, I have the ability to reach out to those schools. You know, one thing that I think I did in 2018 or 2019, I visited all my elementary schools, all one of my middle schools. And then obviously Sparks High School, I'm there all the time. But I met all the principals, you know, tried to have that open line of communication where, you know, I can't help with what's going on, you know, on the school site, but I can help the families outside of that. If there's questions or resources, I want to have that open line of communication, you know, from the principal. She knows, you know, she knows they, or she or he knows their kids better than any of us and knows the families better. And I think that's important to, you know, there's resources out there. We just need to have that line of communication and, you know, I'm here to help. And then regarding racial injustice with housing, as the councilor, my aim is definitely to protect and pass city ordinances that foster and enhance racially quality housing. And, you know, that's going back to these conversations. You know, I don't, I'll be the first to admit, I don't know everything, but I'm open to listen. And that's something I've had this in my entire tenure is my cell phone number, I put it where my email. I'll have meetings. We can do Zoom, phone calls. You know, I'm open to different ideas and different approaches. And that goes back to having these conversations, having these open dialogue year round. And anyone that has an idea, you know, reach out and we can come up with solutions. And I'll leave it at that one. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Abbott. Thank you, Councilmember Abbott. Uh, we're gonna go now to Councilmember Anderson.
So, uh, yeah, having um education, housing and, and social services program in a city that are effective for everybody um is the only way you can have a healthy, vibrant community. And we need to do everything we can to assure that. Um, as Councilman Abbott said, that as a council member, we do not really interact all that much with the K through twelve. Um, that obviously goes to the Washoe County um board um for, for that. Um, as well as the higher education side, it's something that likewise, we've, we've got to have a good program to, to bring all of that together and make businesses want to be here and provide for high paying jobs with that education. Um, but again, that's, you know, falls under the, the higher education board of regents um for here in Nevada. Where, I mean, I actually sit on two of the, the only boards and commissions uh that a council member gets involved with, with the school district. And uh both of those, um, I've been excited to be involved with in assuring the monies actually go where they're supposed to from the WC one funds. Um, so I sit on those facilities and oversight committees to make sure that um indeed, the school district is using them for the children. Um, as far as the health side of it, uh, NRS four twenty actually puts the responsibility on the, the county for health um services to include mental health. Um, and there are some that within the city don't believe we should be spending too much money on it. Um, because in a way, a Sparks citizen is double taxed. Um, if, if we're spending money on those mental health uh issues or health issues and then um, I, I make you pay your tax for county as well and it's being covered there. Um, but we need to work on that and figure out where to um utilize those. Like I said earlier, mental health is a serious, serious issue. Um, whether it's tragedies that have taken place in the last couple of years or even going further and back. Um, on a day-to-day basis, our officers and our individuals here with the city are interacting with people that are struggling with mental health. And we've got to be changing the direction on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. And now Mr. Smith.
Okay, thank you very much. So, uh, the question is in addition to policing, how will we address racial injustice, education, housing and social services? Well, first thing, if there is an injustice as a city council person or any elective official or just a resident of Sparks, we call it out when we see it. Uh, that's the first thing that we do. Uh, that's the best way that we can address it, but we do it in regards of helping that person understand maybe what they did uh was wrong. That's how we do it as a community. Now let's go into the question. Uh, I believe that uh education is the great equalizer. That's what we have right now. And if someone can get a good education, uh, that will propel them to a next step in life. And uh, it may not open all the doors, but you can put your foot in that sucker and make sure it doesn't close. Uh, if you have some education behind you. I have been a big proponent of bringing a higher education institution to the city of Sparks. Um, I think it's important. I think it's very important if it's trade schools um relocated here or if it's for your institutions. Um, the other part, I believe in housing. Uh, we are pricing so many people out of the market uh that folks have to join up multiple people in a unit. I believe in the American dream. I think people should be able to afford a home. Uh, you work hard, you should be able to buy a house and that's not happening. I personally believe uh that we should use our certificate programs and our reduced tax rate that we already have on file with the county. Uh, where developers can build affordable housing, as long as they don't sell that housing, the rent will be at a lower rate than what the market is calling for. So I believe in mixed income living. Uh, because if you can build all over the city, people's kids will have the chance to go to great schools and we can help uh fund inner city schools even, even better. Next question about social service. In my part of the ward, we're the suburbs, but we see homeless people in the suburbs. Who knows what it will look like after uh this pandemic's over? We see people living in our, in our, in our cars. The first thing what we do, we see those type of issues. And my wife and I, we have bought people a lunch or dinner, we see a homeless person on the side of the road because that's what we do. Now the bigger picture of it, this is not just a Sparks issue. And people say we're handcuffed on certain things that we can do and what we cannot do. I will lobby the county, I will lobby uh the state, uh, eight of our state legislatures uh so we can build a homeless shelter here uh in the Truckee Meadows. And with that, we attack mental health um and also addiction. Uh, but this is not just a, a government thing, but this is a nonprofit, all of us working together to make sure we're building a community uh that we want our kids to live in and that we're gonna take care of all the citizens. And that's what we consider really our own. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And now Mr. Alar.
Thank you so much for that question. Uh, I agree with Quentin on pretty much everything he said. I think we need a, a reimagining top to bottom with how we approach issues around racial injustice in education, housing and social services. Uh, Sparks still suffers from deep, long-running racial disparities in homeownership, education, access to healthcare, equal wages and more. And the challenges that our black Hispanic and AAPI communities face are intersectional. So access to a good job impacts their ability to afford childcare and healthcare, for instance, which then have long-term implications for upward mobility and even personal safety. So for example, Makai Lee's long-term challenges accessing mental healthcare and the consequences of that lack of access for him and his family. Uh, it's not enough to have an open door for discussing these issues. We need to actively seek out the ways that people in our community are struggling, hear them and act on them. Uh, for example, our council meetings and website are only in English. I know they're working on a Spanish translation, but like this isn't a new problem. This has been ongoing for decades. And over the past ten years, I've never seen any Spanish language content on the Sparks website until very, very recently. Uh, even though about thirty plus percent of Ward one is Hispanic. Uh, when council is making these budget, policy and land use decisions that critically impact people of color, they do need to be involved at the very beginning and not looped in as an afterthought, just because they don't have the time or the money to influence policy. All city outreach needs to be multilingual and sensitive to the needs of these working families. And we need to encourage participation in council meetings by when we do have them in person, offering childcare or holding the meetings at a time when people are actually able to attend, not midday on weekdays when most working families are at their jobs. Uh, I also strongly support a municipal minimum wage ordinance. I know that's something we might have to look around and see if we can actually do. Uh, but another huge one that I support very strongly is revising our zoning in according with, in accordance with principles of housing justice. And this is something Quentin mentioned very briefly, uh, which is the way our neighborhoods are set up, our suburbs versus our multi-use development district down here. They keep families in their neighborhoods. Uh, they keep poor people in the poor neighborhoods and they keep better off people in the suburbs. And you know, originally when single families zoning was invented uh in Berkeley, it was a racist invention designed to keep white neighborhoods white. I believe we should be able to build duplexes and quadplexes that match the character of their communities across the city.
Thirty seconds.
Increasing density in that way is a great way to act, increase access to affordable housing. Uh, when it comes to homelessness in our area and the unsheltered population, I strongly oppose the sweeps. I'd like to work with Sparks PD to end the sweeps and maybe establish a safe camp or a homeless shelter somewhere here in the city of Sparks. Uh, we can't just push them back over the border to Reno and pretend that it's not our problem. Uh, so generally, I'd like to prioritize infill development and guard against that gentrification which whitewashes our neighborhoods and ensure that working people.
Thank you.
Thank you, sorry.
Thank you, Sarah. Now I would like to invite Mr. Omar Kane for question number three. Mr. Kane, you're muted, so.
Uh, thank you, Brother Sharif. Thank you to action, thank you to everybody. And uh, my name is Omar Kane, uh, member of North and Nevada Muslim Community. And as you know, uh, COVID nineteen has devastated local budgets. And my question to you is, uh, what would you do to address budget shortfalls?
Thank you, Omar. Uh, we're gonna start with uh Ms. Alar.
Absolutely. So by now, we're six months deep into the COVID crisis. Uh, every local government knows that we're facing serious budgetary shortfalls in the next several years. And there's very little that we can do as a city to uh leverage increased taxes. Uh, but there are some short and long-term solutions that we can work on. In the short term, we do need to be aggressively lobbying our federal partners for additional support. Uh, I was very dismayed by Trump's declaration that he wasn't going to support any additional stimulus to state or local governments this year. That's going to have a very negative effect on the people who can afford it least, which is our public safety personnel, our firefighters and the people in this city who depend most on the city services that we offer or the social services that our county offers. Uh, in the longer term, we need to be working on developing more sustainable funding mechanisms for our city at a state level. Uh, because what the state does, does affect us here in the city of Sparks. Uh, so for example, uh, we can reshape Nevada's tax base, working with the legislature by revisiting property tax reform. Senator Julia Ratty had a great proposal that very nearly crossed the final hurdle in twenty nineteen. Um, I also believe that we should remove deductions for mining companies and ensure that big corporations here in Sparks pay their fair share. We should not be giving million-dollar parking garages to developers when we have so many residents hanging on by their fingernails. What our city does in, in the next few months is going to affect those people who are on the verge of eviction. We're looking at that tsunami that I was talking about earlier of people getting kicked out of their homes, maybe as soon as next week when the state eviction moratorium ends. And if we can't provide for them at a city level, we need to work with the county and with the state to ensure that as many social services as possible remain covered. When we do have to make cuts, we need to preserve the services that directly affect our most vulnerable as much as poss- possible. So I will fight to protect the quality and delivery of those essential city services and to protect our public spaces. Because for many people, when a park is all you have, if you've been evicted, it needs to be beautiful as well. So services that I will prioritize. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alar. Uh, Julie, now, uh, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, thank you again, Omar. Um, uh, what would, uh, what would I do if we addressed the, the budget shortfall? Uh, first, um, first, I would protect uh as many city employees as possible. As a city council uh person, uh, I plan on taking a cut right, right off the bat. Um, I think if, if I can cut my salary, uh, then I would have folks that were uh making more than me in leadership positions, uh, cut their uh salaries uh too. Um, and I'm thinking about, I would say anywhere from a two to three percent cut. For me, I've gone as high as to a five and ten percent cut for my own personal, personal uh salary. Uh, next, uh, I would also, uh, uh, next I would also um address the star bond issue. Uh, to make sure as we head forward, uh, is that uh we be careful of what we add into uh some of our legends areas. And then even looking forward, we don't want any of those businesses to leave after their sweet deal is, is up. So I would try to keep as uh many businesses here as possible and make sure they do pay the appropriate uh sales tax that they're supposed to pay uh according to uh, after those bonds are, are eventually up. Uh, the next thing I would look at is retrofitting some of our business, our, our buildings here in, in the city. Uh, where many folks could work from home, I think that's something that they should do. Consolidating some of those services into certain areas and limiting amount of time of the businesses actually for the city, city services being open. I would take no direct cuts or anything for a fire or, or police. Um, that's what I would look at. And I think, we gotta look at something else too, and I'm just gonna throw this out there. Most of us are still paying our property taxes and most of us are also paying into the sales tax. I think our hit is not gonna be as hard here in Northern Nevada as it is in other parts of the state. Um, I do think that we should look, uh, also cutting any type of travel, any type per diem, anything, anything like, like that. Um, before we take even deep cuts, but most of us, we're all still paying our property taxes. But on the other side of that too, uh, we're, we're also gonna have to have some type of uh moratorium here within the city uh to help uh reduce any type of burden for local property taxes for, for owners. Cause if we don't do that, we will uh dip into uh most likely a home foreclosure type situation for people that were hit really hard. Um, with
Thirty seconds.
So, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Now we're gonna go to Councilmember Anderson.
So, uh, over the last several months, um, what we saw leading up to COVID is all kinds of wonderful things that we were gonna be doing in the city of Sparks. Um, adding uh more things to the parks and, and making them more accessible to everybody. Um, as well as adding, adding more bodies to better serve our, our community. Uh, with COVID, um, hitting it, it brought about a, a change of direction where we had to refocus immediately to account for tens of millions of dollars um in, in variance and increased costs as well as uh loss in revenue. So as it stands right now, we're still looking at um potentially over this, this fiscal year, um, a twelve million dollar shortfall as far as uh the budget. And what we've been doing um from, right from the beginning, um, whether it was Councilman Abbott, myself and the others on council, uh, we voluntarily, along with the leadership in um the city manager and all of his team and the department heads, um voluntarily took pay cuts. And we felt that was the, the first way, the best way to, to lead out. Um, because we were expecting that we too would have to then go to all of our employees and ask them to, to do the same. Uh, we were fortunate in the fact that we did receive CARES Act funds and were able to uh shore up a lot of the expenses that were being incurred because of COVID. Um, but what it leaves is that we still have a, a huge budget deficit that we're gonna be facing, as Wendy said, for years to come. Um, one of the things that I think we have to do is we really have to be working and in tune with the leadership of the city because of the fact that um there are so many moving parts that um, one, one decision is gonna have a ripple effect through the community. So some of the things that we've been doing as of late um is looking at everything from um the different budgets of uh how automobile um purchases are made and um contingency funds and um, all the different types of, of ways that we can potentially shore up uh for the loss. Um, we've been able to, to make changes in the way that people are working. Um, yeah, during COVID, basically city hall has been almost shut down. Um, in the sense that people are working remotely and um a skeleton crew, if you will, working there. Um, but these are the things that we've got to be willing to do. We can't be afraid as the leadership to make hard decisions. And if it comes down to the worst-case scenario that as, as time goes on and this might even get worse, we have to be willing and to make that decision, whether or not we feel comfortable doing it, we have to do that. And um, hopefully we don't have to go there. Hopefully we aren't talking about positions or anything like that. But um, those are the things we have to be prepared for.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. Now we're gonna go to Councilmember Abbott.
Uh, so I'm just gonna give a shout out to all, you know, all four of us total. These next four years and probably even hopefully not after that, they're not gonna be fun years. You know, we're, we're gonna be making choices on our budget that, you know, it's gonna be difficult times. And so I'm definitely shout out to all, any of us that are in office November fourth or November tenth, every day it is when we find out the results. Um, you know, we, we chose this, we understand we're gonna make some hard decisions. And you know, COVID nineteen threw a curveball. We, we had our budget session, you know, uh, way before that, we were, you know, things were looking good and then this happened. And you know, there's no playbook for this. And so definitely listening to our, you know, our financial director, Jeff Kong, who's an amazing, amazing, uh, very smart man. And the staff, the staff's great. And so, you know, they're the experts. They're the ones that are, you know, every, uh, our company, if you don't wanna watch the other night or other day. Um, he uh gave us an update, it's how we're looking. And the latest sales, like it didn't look too bad, but we're still, we're not out of it. You know, there's still a lot of caution, you know, going into winter and all. And um, I'll second what Councilman Anderson said, you know, when things first happened, we took a pay cut. Cause you know, she's just like, I think Quentin hit on it first, is it's, it was important for us to lead by example. We need to do, we need to take a cut, we're gonna ask others to do the same. And we understood our cut, you know, I, you know, from elected and ever management, wasn't gonna save the budget, there's no doubt at all. But how can we in our good faith ask others, you know, to, to take a pay cut if we can't even do it ourselves? Uh, and you know, also more importantly, we, we all, we wanna keep our, our bodies employed, people employed because that's families at home, that's, um, you know, there's a whole ripple effect there that not a priority is keeping, keeping people employed, keeping, you know, someone normality going to the city. And then um, you know, our budget, you know, we're looking at maybe having to do some expansion at city hall, change some things up. So with COVID, you know, uh, there, there is some positive, you know, we're looking at who can work from home. there's some positive, you know, we're looking at who can work from home, you know, now we don't need to expand or make these changes. As much, we do need to get some bodies, you know, once it's safe back into City Hall, but we're, you know, we're running out of room bodies there. So that's, that's definitely going to adjust our, our capital improvement project budgetary items. And, you know, looking at COVID too, that CIP items, capital improvement project, you know, we had them frozen. We've frozen some open positions for staff. We're just trying to see where everything's going. It's a very fluid situation.
Thirty seconds.
We're just taking it kind of day by day, week by week. And if we can, you know, obviously more CARES Act money was great. That was an awesome investment that we had for our community that we're giving back to our community. But we can use, you know, we can use more. We have the next year, we're, we're looking at things that I am probably up for time, but thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Abbott. Now I would like to invite Patricia to share her story with us.
Good evening. My name is Patricia and I am a member of Action and St. Paul's Episcopal Church, which is located in the city of Sparks, Ward 1. I'm a long-term resident of our community and I have seen the devastating effects of investing in policing and incarceration of communities instead of housing and community support firsthand. I currently live with a mobility disorder, COPD, sleep apnea, breast cancer and fibromyalgia. I require an oxygen concentrator and a CPAP machine. I am deaf blind. I am an autistic senior as well with a sensory processing disorder. Because of this, I am unable to work and rely on payments from Social Security disability benefits and rental support in order to stay housed. I am paying more than 50% of my income in rent once I move into my new apartment at the end of this month. Despite paying such a huge portion of my income in rent, I am grateful to have finally found a place to live. As of last week, I was terrified that my only option, once my current lease ran out, would be homelessness. Had recently reopened the Section 8 Housing Choice voucher waitlist and I was finally able to get on the waitlist. But it is unknown how long I will be on that list before I get that support. I was lucky to even get on the list. It was open for a week and a half. I currently serve as Chair of the Statewide Independent Living Council. I am active with my church and I am in my fourth year of education for ministry. I try to contribute to my community and I feel frustrated that systems that hurt people continue to be funded while I cannot receive basic support from my state or local governments. Thank you for letting me share my story. This is my question for you. COVID-19 has further worsened an already severe housing crisis in Nevada. How would you address housing security issues?
Thank you, Patricia. Now we're gonna go to Councilmember Abbott.
All right. So for, for the housing crisis in Nevada, definitely has only, only gotten worse. You know, we, we have a couple items we are working on right now. I know it's not strictly to understanding and getting this information out there. We have an eviction mediation program that we, we have up and running right now for Sparks. And so with the, the moratorium lifting in the near future, you know, there's the ability that it will help tenants and landlords and just keep that line of communication open, you know, more importantly, keep people out of the court system, which is a positive for both parties, for the renters and landlords. And we, we have money aside from CARES Act for that. And we're looking there. We also have some rental assistance for our residential. And I understand that's more short term and that's going through RHA, Reno Housing Authority. And even though it has Reno in its name, my, my kind of thing, I tell myself is it's regional housing authorities for Reno, Sparks, Washoe County as a whole. And so there's money right now available to apply for anyone that's listening that's in need or you know someone, there's money to help you right now. You know, the hardships you're facing with COVID. And looking, you know, down the future, we have the Home Consortium where we put money aside to get projects, to get affordable housing projects here in Sparks. And Reno, it kind of bounces around, but you know, we got one right here in Ward 1, Alpine Haven, it's right here on Audi. Great heat project. It was cool. Then when I first got elected, we had the groundbreaking and then I was able to go in and see the final and just see, you know, touch the people that it's helping, you know, the people that were, you know, living in not a good situation, but now have a place to call home, a place where they can have their family and friends. And that's super important to have that, have a place where everyone can call home. And, you know, we need to look at affordable housing from, you know, ADUs, accessory dwelling units, which we allow in Sparks. There are a ton in Ward 1. And for anyone, an ADU is pretty much, if you would go downtown Sparks and you look down an alley, there, whenever you see a half address, it's almost, it's an ADU. And it allows for us to get just more density down there. And, you know, that we're already having the same property tax for that property. And well, there's a little bit more with the new, the new building, but you're able to get more people in that, in that area and it helps with rent, you know, you're, it might be, it's a little bit of a smaller unit, you know, we're not renting, there's about 1,800 square for ADUs. But it's a safe place for people to call home. And that's something that we've allowed in Sparks and I've supported it continually. I've had people not like it that have called me during, during, during my tenure so far. And I do support it and I do, I don't want that reversed at all. I think it's a good thing that we have.
Thirty seconds.
In the city of Sparks. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Abbott. Now we're gonna go to Councilmember Anderson.
So recently on, on the Spark City Council, we moved $3.3 million of our CARES Act funds into social assistance programs, helping out everything from, from housing assistance, trying to get businesses leg up also to get restarted during these turbulent times. The homeless, social distancing assistance and programs like that. So we as city council saw that that was one of the things that is, is a high priority for all of us is doing what we can on the short term. A long term, there, there are some solutions that, that we've been exploring as well. One of the ones that I, I think that City of Reno has done well on and, and take a, take a page from their playbook, if you will, in the sense that we can encourage builders and developers to make smart growth here in, in Sparks, especially in the infill areas where we can bring lower housing costs by providing more facilities. On the bottom line is if we all own apartment complexes or condos, I guarantee you that the market is going to come down if more people are added to the group and more facilities are added, which it's gonna help us out. But then again, some of the other things that I've been looking into is, is looking at what has been successful in the East Coast with the co-op facilities. Here in, in Sparks, actually in, in Ward 1, we have two of the three facilities in the state of Nevada that are co-op. And they've been very successful. What I am looking to do is, is see if we can use CBDG funds to help promote those kind of projects and have a partnership with, with the city as well as local private agencies and nonprofits to, to be able to make low housing and affordable housing for, for different groups in, in our community. But yeah, that's, that's a beautiful picture. If you, if you go look at those two facilities in, in, right there in Donald's Ward, Ward 1. It's, it's, they're fantastic facilities. In fact, my, my mom lives in one of those and they're incredible place that we can offer up to our community. All the things that, that I have in mind.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. Mr. Smith?
Can you, can you repeat the question? So we all can hear it again.
Yes, it says COVID-19 has further worsened an already severe housing crisis in Nevada. How would you address housing security issues?
All right, thank you. First, I, I want to say, thank you, thank you, Ms. Patricia, for telling your story about what's, what's going on. We hear stories like that. Sometimes we are somewhat exempt because it's not happening to us, but it is happening to us. It's happening to one of our own person that's living in this, in this area. The first thing I, I look at, and I kind of mentioned it before, is that we're gonna have to build. And it's two parts. It's build, but also build with the right infrastructure and stuff in place. The further we're able to build out, not sprawl, we can get the cost lower. But that also means we have to have RTC that's part of it. So that someone can be able to hop on a city bus transit system, senior services transit system to take them to places that they, that they need. In my ward in Ward 3, we have doctors' offices on the eastern part of the city. That might be a place where we probably would like to build affordable housing, especially for our senior population. Now with that said too, there are folks that are losing houses. And I just want to go back when I, when I said about, you know, it's not gonna be as bad as much, I mean, the city budget itself. I believe any type of federal dollars or grants that we receive from the state level, from Nevada Division of Housing or so, that should go directly to help the poor folks in our community. And I think we hide behind this veil as if there's no poor folks here. There definitely is, is a working poor, that people have worked their, their life and because of the rising cost of medications and everything else that they can barely pay their rent. Those funds gotta be funneled very quickly, the people that currently have housing. I do like the co-op idea. And some folks in my ward will say, well, not in my neighborhood and that we gotta talk about the real issues here. But if we do have land and we're here to help people, then we need to build there. And if we have local builders that decide they don't want to participate or so, then we'll find people that will build and build pretty quick. So that's how I plan on address the housing security issue. And just from the moral aspect of it, I was a landlord at one time, my own proper wife and I did here in the city of Sparks. And I'm speaking to all the landlords, if you can afford it, defer rent, you know, if you can afford it.
Thirty seconds.
Cut back on maybe reducing the, the rent and helping folks out. Cause in reality, we know we're not going to be able to build. People don't want to hear like, oh, we want to hear something positive. But the positive impact, if you do not do on property here, work something out with the people that you're renting to. That, that's what I recommend. That's, that's the moral part of, part of this. And if there's any type of funds available, any funds that we get from the federal or the state, sure that it gets to, get to. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Now, Ms. Estelaro? Same question.
Thank you so much. So thank you, Patricia, for telling us your story. That is absolutely heartbreaking. And if there's anything I can do to help, please reach out. I'm happy to work with you and put you in contact with some people at Washoe Legal Services. I've got some friends who work there. Just please let me know if there's anything we can do to help. Moving on to the question, I think I'm the only renter who's a candidate on this panel. And I've seen my rent go up hundreds of dollars over the past few years. It's been pretty astonishing, the rate at which the cost of housing has increased in northern Nevada. And unfortunately, because of the COVID pandemic, pretty much everybody has been negatively affected by access to income in one way or another, whether it's yourself or a partner or a parent or a child who might have helped you cover the rent in the past, that may not be there anymore. And Ward 1 has a very large percentage of renters. I know that the city of Sparks is trying very hard to provide rental assistance, but the scale of the problem is almost insurmountable given the number of people who have been affected, especially here in Nevada with our entertainment industry and our tourism industry. So whatever we throw, it's, it's a drop in the bucket, right? So my preferred solution, I know that it's unlikely to happen, but my preferred solution would be widespread rent and mortgage forgiveness for the duration of the pandemic. I believe that housing is a human right. We also need to get ahead of what's likely to be a spike in evictions when the moratorium ends later this week and make sure that we have enough winter shelter capacity to protect our, what is likely to be a growing number of outdoor neighbors when people are evicted. Our regional capacity is currently insufficient and trying to provide safe social distancing with an increasing number of unsheltered residents is a potential catastrophe on the horizon that we really need to be prepared for and work with Washoe County to make sure that this winter we don't see tragedy strike. So with regard to the cost of housing more broadly, it's a structural problem and it requires a structural solution, which is dramatically increasing the supply of housing through both conventional and unconventional means. I'm a strong supporter of inclusionary zoning and building more affordable housing. But we should also revisit why certain areas of our city were zoned single family only in the past and consider upzoning. So I live in the multi-use district south of Prater in Ward 1 here in Sparks. Everything north of Prater is single family only. The neighborhood just north of me is in a single family six zone, which means that if a house there is bought and destroyed, it can only be replaced with another house just like it. So the only way we can upzone that neighborhood is to change the zoning and move it to more, to more multi-use type zoning. Otherwise, we see the same families getting displaced over and over and over again. But we need some of these innovative zoning strategies and more affordable types of units in order to address that supply problem we're struggling with. And we need to make sure that the most vulnerable can afford housing here in Sparks, which has historically been a working class community.
Time.
Thank you, Ms. Estelaro. Unfortunately, we came to the end of, of the question section, but we're not done yet. I encourage all the candidates to answer questions as you see them in the, in the chat room. But I would like to invite all the candidates now for a two-minute closing statement and we're gonna start with Ms. Estelaro.
Thank you again so much for having me here tonight. The work Action does in our community is invaluable. You give a voice to the voiceless and that's what I'm struggling, working really hard to do this election cycle with my campaign as well, to listen to those silences and find those people who are struggling and elevate them. Whether it's the senior I met when knocking doors back last fall before the pandemic, who said she had to move three times because her rent just kept going up from a two-bedroom to a one-bedroom to eventually a studio apartment. Whether it's a struggling family that I got into contact with earlier this year when phone banking, who was having difficulty accessing food and needed connection to food resources. Whether it's people who are on Section 8 housing and are concerned about losing their place on the list because the landlord is considering opting out of the system. Whatever it might be that people are struggling with, that's why we go into public service. And that's why I'm running for Spark City Council, to give a voice to these people who don't have the time or the privilege to make their voices heard on Spark City Council. We can't continue to do things the way we've done them in the city of Sparks in the past. We need a bold new strategy for moving forward with compassion and centering people who haven't been heard when we make policy, making sure that they are the ones that we're consulting when we make these land use decisions, zoning decisions, when we make any kind of decision about social services in the city of Sparks and ensuring that those are the people we prioritize. I strongly suggest you get involved if you can with one of these campaigns that you believe in. My campaign website is wendyforsparks.com. Find a local candidate. Municipal politics are where things happen and it's where we can serve people best. I am very grateful for the time. Thank you for the opportunity and have a great night.
Thank you, Ms. Estelaro. Mrs. Smith?
All right, thank, thank you very much, Wendy. All right. So I personally believe people should be accessible. I think that's how I'd be different compared to other, other candidates, like persons I'm actually running against. I believe that if you are able to give me a call and I answer that phone call regardless if it's in within my jurisdiction, but you're just telling me you need help, well, I'm here to help you. I'm not gonna tell you it's a county issue. I'm not gonna tell you a state legislature issue. And if you really need help, I'm not gonna tell you it's education. I'm, I'm gonna fight for you the best I can. I look at this role as someone at a lobbyist role, a lobbyist role for the city. Lobbying for residents as a representative. And I think that's what we haven't seen here for some years. If it deals with somebody, you know, building a massive complex right next to you that's just not affordable for folks, for me, I would ask the questions, well, how much is this gonna cost in a sense per the person renting it? And this will just fuel the fire of being a city that's just not affordable for people. When it comes down to dealing with the homeless population in our city, I won't push it over to the county. I will work with non-governmental organizations and also with the different government organizations to make sure we are dealing with this problem. People shouldn't be living in parks. We should be helping folks get into long-term housing. I think that's how I'm, I'm just different. I think that's how I'm, I'm just different. I'm approaching this a different way. And I personally believe that we should put our faith in action. Whatever our belief is, uh, I believe the people here, everyone that's, that's here today, I believe their intentions are good. Um, I know this was not part of it and, um, I do want to say something. I, I accepted Mr. Anderson's apology and I appreciate him for, for reaching out to me. And not only did I accept it, but I also forgave him. Because I believe we live in a community with all different types of people and they all should be brought to the table. And we tell people, hey, wait a minute, that's not right. It's not cool. But I do believe that we all need to work together. Something else I do want to address.
Unfortunately, unfortunately for nonpartisan rules, we have to give equal time to everybody. So thank you so much.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you. I'm just gonna move next to Councilmember Anderson.
Okay. And actually, I'll just follow up and say, Quinn, thank you very much. Your character has, has shown through very well and I, I appreciate that. As far as reaching out to us in the community, connecting with people in the community, in, in all honesty, this is actually one of my favorite parts of the job is listening to the concerns, the thoughts, the ideas that people from our community have. It's actually one of the funnest things before COVID, getting to actually engage with neighbors throughout Ward Three in getting to know them and, and understand the things they like about the city and the things that they'd like to see differently. And I agree that it's, it's got to be everybody from, from our community that has a voice that's heard. This evening, I answered the, my phone and it was someone that has a different political viewpoint than mine, but we engaged in a conversation after he realized that he wasn't talking to recording. He was a little shocked that he was actually talking to, to me. But that's what, that's what I believe in, that we have to be accessible. We have to engage the public. Some of the things I'd like to encourage you guys, please continue to, to reach out to us, continue to get involved in the community in different ways. In the city of Sparks, we're always looking for volunteers like yourself to, to join our different commissions and boards that we have here. Like I said, whether they're advisory committees or whatever that role is, that's, that's how we can hear your voice and, and we really want to do that. Please feel free to give me a call as well. Um, I, I appreciate hearing from you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. Now we're gonna go to Councilmember Abbott.
Yep, I'll sum it up and I just want to thank everyone for taking the time, you know, this evening, just to, you know, hear us out. I do believe Sparks is actually the best place to call home. I think we all can agree on that. Everyone that's listening, that's living in Sparks and all of us that are running for office. We understand that, you know, there's some improvements for sure, but it, you know, it's conversations like this, I'm saying that, you know, we, we can get there. And also, you know, we need to ensure that we're giving, you know, a hundred percent to our residents in Sparks. You know, that ranges from keeping neighborhoods safe and clean, you know, parks clean, streets and sidewalks that are maintained. And then I think, I think Quentin and Paul, and I think Wendy might even say this too, is just being accessible to residents all year. You know, it's, it's absolutely important. I've been accessible from the very beginning and, you know, I, I won't name any names, but there's a lot of politicians that are only accessible during an election year and that's not right. You should be a, you know, you should be accessible when, all the, anytime, you know, you call, if someone calls, you answer. You know, with that, you can call, text me. My cell phone number is 771-8674. My email is dolan@sparkscloud.com. You know, that you reaching out is how I find out about, you know, solutions that we've had tonight or different viewpoints. I find out about the pothole that needs to be repaired or the street light that needs to be repaired. You know, that's how you reaching out allows me to help, we can help everyone. And also I'll put the, my website, my website, the www.sparkscloud.com. And then also you can check it out in Spanish. It's a sparksorguloso.com and then it's all on, all in Spanish there as well. So if you have any questions, reach out. Um, I'm also available on all your social media platforms. It's Dolan for Sparks, the Twitter, Instagram, Facebook. And reach out. Thank you guys for tuning in. I appreciate it and we'll go from there. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Abbott. Actually, on, on behalf of Action and the Committee of Sparks, I would like to thank all the candidates for speaking with us today. We're really excited to continue working with you in, in the, in the future. And in that regard, we have a request to make of you. It's a pledge. It's a pledge to meet with Action Leaders. So it's a yes and no. If elected, do you pledge to meet with Action Leaders within the first 100 days of your term to discuss how to best implement the new normal? Yes and no, Councilmember Abbott?
Yes, absolutely. We could do it in 50 days.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Estelaro?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you. Thank you all. And now I will hand it over to Denise.
Hi, my name is Denise Mena. Again, thank you candidates for taking the time to come and participate in this candidate forum. Uh, we know that there were a lot of voters who are really excited to hear what you were going to have to say today. And so we're really appreciative of taking the time to spend with us. I do just want to remind everybody, Action is a 501(c)(3) nonpartisan organization. We do not endorse any political party or candidate. That being said, I want to make sure that everyone who attended here tonight leaves with some voter information to make sure that you're able to vote this year. There are three ways to vote in 2020. First is vote by mail, drop off ballot, and vote in person. Some information about vote by mail. You can complete your ballot at home and mail it in, no postage required. And all ballots must be postmarked by November 3rd, 2020 to be counted. For drop-off ballots, after receiving and completing your mail-in ballot, you can drop it off yourself during early voting, which is October 17th till the 30th, and on Election Day, November 3rd, at designated drop-off locations. I do want to emphasize that you are not able to use a drop-off location until early voting starts, which is on October 17th. You can vote in person. You can also vote in person during early voting, which again, October 17th until the 30th, and on Election Day, November 3rd, at designated polling locations. We're putting a link in the chat for our, for our website that has a lot of information about, that we just mentioned, plus some important dates. If you have any questions, you can reach out to our organizer, Aria Ovley, and they'll put, be putting her email in the chat as well. Alright, so important information. Folks, mail-in ballots were sent to all active registered voters in Washoe County starting October 5th, 2020. If you have not yet received your ballot, you should check to confirm that your voter registration is accurate and up to date. That means that if you have not received the ballot, you may not be registered to vote. You can check it on the, uh, Washoe County Register's website. All mail, mail-in ballots must be postmarked by November 3rd, 2020 to be counted. Again, early voting starts on October 17th until the 30th and Election Day is November 3rd. We'll also be putting in the chat a link for our voter guide, which asks candidates all the same questions that we get here today, but it is available in English and Spanish. So please make sure that you share that and read it. For those of you looking for another way to get engaged, we have this amazing tool called Outvote. It is an app that you can download onto your phone. What you do is you download it and then you can send and make sure that everybody in your contact list is registered to vote. So you're gonna need the code 836038 to be, to access our network and family. But this is an amazing tool. It's gonna make it really easy to register everybody to vote. We're also leaving a link for a signup form. If you're interested in learning more about the new normal framework, if you're interested in learning more about Action and getting engaged, to really just getting people to, uh, vote this year, sign up and we'll get, we'll reach out to you. I do also want to encourage everyone to attend the next, the next candidate forum, the Washoe County Commissioner, next Tuesday, same time, 5:30 PM. Again, that's happening October 20th at 5:30 PM. Make sure you're registered. Again, we want to thank all of you for.
Denise, I think that the date is wrong here on this slide. I apologize for that. So October 20th, not October 21st.
I apologize. Yes, so it is October 20th. Thank you, Aria. Again, thank you all for coming. This was an amazing forum. Everybody was so amazing. Thank you candidates for spending time to answering all our questions. Have a good night and thank you.
Thank you all. Have a great night.
Have a good one.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. I appreciate it. Have a great night.
Take care.
Have a good night. Thanks, guys.